Hold your papers on your microphone.
Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is Monday, November 28th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge. Rita, would you lead us, please?
Led allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Rita for doing that. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda.
Did move that we approve the agenda for November 28th.
I'll second it. Moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll get right on into our agenda. First item, agenda item is an action item. These are claims. Order claims. I don't think there was any junior college.
Not this time. I'm waiting for a photo ID from the one application I do have.
And the floor is open for any questions.
Looked at them, I had a basic question, but I don't remember what it was.
How's the time? Think about a lot of sporting goods equivalent.
A couple of new recreation deputies are outputting them.
So Rita, the internet down at the mayor title, we, I'm assuming we got a $1,400 credit or?
They're just, the installation is deducted off of their bill for this month's rent.
Oh, very good, the whole thing. Oh, very good.
You know, is that the last of the scanning bills for the assessor?
I haven't got any idea. I think they were getting close to the end when I asked June and bill came in, so.
They took all those files, we're not gonna know.
I guess I would have to ask Sue for, that's her.
I remember.
Rita, do you remember how many desks we bought for the assessor? Is that two desks?
No, there's more than that. I know that there was some problem with delivery and damaged desks, so there was returns. So there's probably four in there. I think there's four.
Okay.
On the facilities bill.
Oh, I'll look, yeah, that's where it'd be.
Some on there. For office savers.
Let me see, we got all the poll workers paid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if anybody doesn't have any more questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims and the board order claims. Who moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mentor likes to do that.
Nah, there's too many lines up in the Excel spread, so.
Ryan, I was right in front of your house, 65 miles an hour. Elk, right in the middle of the road.
Did you say 75 miles?
My car kicked in, 65. My car kicked in and yanked me to the side. I think my car probably saved my life.
You never heard of it?
That's as close as I've ever come. The thinking I was not gonna be okay. So can you keep the elk off the road there, please?
What time, what time was it?
6:30, Saturday night, so it was dark.
They've kind of been hanging out.
Well, Ken's feeding him.
I know.
You got one in your garage yet?
No.
No? You need to put one in your garage. Well, not up where I'm at, because I've been wanting to get one.
I just about did it for you. You could have just come down and scraped off the road.
We need June. Guess we'll wait.
June's not here?
Yeah, well, I guess Sue will probably go.
So my, I was down showing property in Garden Valley, and my nephew was going hunting the next day. So the property that we're looking at, we're standing on the deck, four elk come and lay down in the yard. Two of them got beautiful racks on them. He is just hyperventilating. I said, "Well, now you know where to come tomorrow." That was, that was a really good sales feature, though. I was really proud of the agent for doing that.
Cue the elk.
Coax, coax the elk to the property. Am I to call Sue and see if she's around, or?
Sue is around us. But June did send an email.
She did?
Yeah. On, let's see here. On Wednesday, November 23rd, just letting us know that she would be heading to Boise to attend her last assessor meeting.
Oh, that's right, she did.
I didn't get that.
It was in the group commissioner's email, Mr. Chairman.
Hey Sue, it's elk. Hey, June's not here today. You gonna come up and give the assessor report? Oh, okay, no, I didn't get that part. We just got that she was headed towards, gonna be in Boise and is not gonna be here, but no reports. So I'll just go right past her and move on to the next one. Okay, thanks. You bet, bye. Okay, so we're gonna move on down to our agenda. This is elected officials' report, and June Fulmer has notified us that there's nothing to report, and she's not available, so we'll go right on to Mr. Miller.
Commissioners.
Good morning.
The first thing I'd like to present to the commissioners is the matter that is on the agenda as an action item, to move money from the general fund reserve to some of the expense lines that went over. This year, the total is $20,194.24 that we would like to move from the general fund reserve. And we have provided you with a breakdown of where that money would be journal entryed in to make sure that their budgets aren't completely over budget. $20,000 is actually less than it has been in the past, so that is good news. I'd like to thank all of the elected officials, department heads, for maintaining their budget, not going over. And all in all, this is a good news that it's only $20,000 that we needed to move from the general fund reserve.
So Doug, the public defense was the biggest one. I'm assuming we bumped that budget for this year?
We have.
It was almost $12,000 of it. Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 2301.
Who moved, Chairman?
Second. Moved in second to approve resolution 2301, declaring the need to increase budgets pursuant to Idaho Code 311605, authorizing transfer of appropriations from general funds reserved to various budgets to meet expenditures necessarily incurred but not provided for in the fiscal year 22 budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That was pretty impressive. With the size of our budget, it'll only be $20,000.
Pretty minimal.
Very impressive. Congratulations. I'm sure it was because of the clerks.
But, thank you. While the chairman is signing that and the commissioners sign that, I'll just continue with my presentation. We are finally fully staffed in the clerk's office, I would like to announce. We have Nicole Anger, Angier, sorry, I butchered her last name, is our new deputy recorder. She began on the 16th of November, and we're excited to have her onboard. We also have our new grant writer, Mackenzie Castor. She is onboard with us. She will be working in the office two days a week and home from two days a week. So she is again onboard. We have her researching grants. We have her making sure that we're following up on reimbursements. So there's, there's a lot of things, grants, as the commissioners are aware, that we're working on right now. One that I would like to bring to the commissioners' attention is the Yellow Pine wastewater treatment plant that I don't think we've had an update on in some time. I think it's probably time to have Mountain Water Works give the commissioners' teams meeting update, if the commissioners are inclined to see that. But my understanding that that project would begin in March, so.
We got an update on the water system, but not the sewer system, if I remember correctly.
I don't think we've had an update for quite some time, but.
It was way less fall.
And there was some that we had to get back to commerce, wasn't there? Wasn't that 50,000? The EDC had gotten a CBDG grant for 50,000 we had to get back.
Don't remember that.
I'm wondering.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I think it's time for at least that grant to have them come and present to the commissioners, so I'll coordinate that for a review or for an update to be done.
So Doug, on that note, so we just got the Western Federal Land Grant, or whatever it was, on Lake Shore. So is Mary going to follow some of those federal grants through this, or is it just gonna automatically transition to McKenzie, or?
Automatically transitioning into McKenzie.
Okay.
Mary's last day was basically the end of the month.
Okay.
Yep. And we did have a staffing, a debriefing with Mary. So we're fully, we have, we're fully aware of the grants that are outstanding, that are still in the works, that have been approved. So McKenzie's on top of that at this point in time.
Of what days of the week will she be in? Is that floating, or is there?
Nope, she'll be in the office on Tuesdays and Thursdays and working from home Mondays and Wednesdays. But you can always reach her Mondays and Wednesdays as well. And if we need to arrange for a different day for her to come in, I would just ask 24 hours to give her notice to see if she can come in.
Well, we can always come in on Tuesdays or Wednesdays to meet her.
The courts, we have a jury trial, a civil jury trial scheduled for December 13th to begin for two weeks. So unfortunately, during that time, we will have two courts going on, which is going to impact our office as well as the sheriff's office, because they will require to have an additional court security. So I do apologize for that in advance, but everyone has the right to the courts. And so we do have a civil jury trial scheduled for two weeks, beginning on December 13th, with magistrate court taking place Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays. So we're gonna be very busy those two weeks. We have made arrangements for our fiscal year 2022 closeout to be done by Computer Arts. They're going to be able to do that remotely. We don't have a date yet for our audit, but we are working on securing a date for our outside audit to be done, more than likely in January, with the presentation to the commissioners probably in March. So we're also working on that. Some of the closeout final year or year-end reports that we have completed, the trial court finance report has been submitted. I think I might have shared that with the commissioners. I apologize if I already have. The juvenile probation annual report has been presented to the commissioners and submitted. I worked with Jeff and Mickey on the ITD year-end report. So we began that. We should have that before the commissioners within the next couple of weeks, so the commissioners can see the report to ITD. I've completed the local government's registry requirement for Valley County as well as Valley County EMS. So Valley County is in now, is now in compliance with our reporting to the state comptroller's office. I do have a requirement, an additional narrative to present to the state comptroller's office by December 2nd regarding our fiscal year 2023 budget, how it's going to be expended, how our remaining cash is expended. This is something new that legislation has required, that we will get done by December 2nd. I'm also working on the year-end report for Waterways and for Swimmobile. And with that, commissioners, I think I'll remain silent and answer any questions that you might have.
Look, the remaining cash that they're asking for, we didn't have to do that last year, right?
We haven't. They, they want a narrative, legislation wants a narrative of how that remaining cash is being utilized. And I want to make sure the commissioners are aware that we're running on cash, basically from October until we get our tax drive done, right? So we're running on cash from that period until January. And sometimes legislation doesn't really understand that there's not a significant amount of revenue coming in for those months. We have payroll to make, we have expenditures to make. So the code does allow that, but sometimes the legislation sees these large balances of remaining cash for the counties, the cities, during the end of the fiscal year. And they're like, "Whoa, why do you have that much cash on hand?" Well, you have to take into consideration, we're running off on a, we're running our, the county on a cash basis until the tax drive, so.
They haven't said anything in legislation, though, that it's a percentage basis that you can carry?
They haven't. They just want to know the, a narrative of how those funds are budgeted for and being expended.
Doug, have they asked, too, about any interest we've earned off that cash?
They have not. So that information is available, Mr. Chairman. That's, that information is very transparent and readily available.
They want to know if they want to pass legislation this year to cap us. The carryover balance, that's been in discussion for two years.
Yeah.
If Cassie Carnes is leaving us on the fair board, has she turned over a final accounting of the?
I was unaware that this is a potential step down of.
Scott's gone. I mean, they moved, their house is for sale, so I don't know.
Got it.
The last I talked to her last, when it was last week, at the fair board meeting there, she was gonna stick around for a while.
Oh, good.
So I don't know how long a while is, but she, I know they haven't sold their house yet, so.
Just want to make sure we get everything finalized there before we start audit stuff and get everything we need.
Yeah, do you remember last year, there was one we forgot to do, forum or something that we had got, we had to do it really quick? I just want to make sure you got that one done. I don't remember what it was.
Chairman, I apologize, I don't remember off the top of my head, but as the commissioners are aware, we're definitely on, we attempt to do all of our year-end reports that are required. If there are some that are missed, we'll, it will be brought to our attention, and we'll do our due diligence to make sure that it's responded to.
Anything else for Doug? We'll move on down to the list. Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Nago.
Good morning.
Good morning, all. Not a whole lot to report from the prosecutor's office. We do, as the, as the commissioners are aware, we did have a fatal accident here a couple of days ago. The state police continue to investigate that, and will eventually route that to us for charges. Those investigations tend to take some time. There's a crash reconstruction that has to be done and put together, and there are autopsy reports and those sorts of things that have to be gathered before a charging decision can be made. So I wouldn't expect a charging decision right away, but I expect that there will be criminal charges, and they should be, hopefully, within the next few weeks, if not month or two. But generally, those things take, take some time, those investigations do. Our office on the criminal side, you know, we just received another appeal, a decision on appeal. All of our criminal cases that we've taken to trial over the last, the two years that I've been here, I think we've tried six or seven jury trials. Every one of those cases was appealed either to the district court or to the Supreme Court. We just got the decision back today on Ricky Harrison's jury trial. This was the looting case where the guy on the motorcycle fled on Warm Lake Road from, from county deputies. We just got the decision back today, upholding that conviction. Every, so far, every one of those cases has been upheld on appeal, both the conviction and the sentence. I think we have one or maybe two outstanding. Ironically, the first trial I had, two years ago, is, is, I think, maybe the only one still outstanding that is still at the Supreme Court, hasn't been decided yet, but.
Because you have a rock star team.
We do have a good team, and I'm proud of the work that we've done. We continue to try to keep ahead of stuff on the civil side. We're, we're working Oak into the ground and trying to help him out a little bit. Ashley and I are trying to give him a little bit of help, but Oak is working really hard on the civil side, trying to stay ahead of that, too. But other than that, there's not a whole lot to report. The, so far, this year has, has been a good one in our office in terms of, you know, our, our success rates and conviction rates. All that has been very, very good, so. Happy to have any questions or answer any questions.
No questions? You're doing good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning. So it's, got a few slight off some crashes over the holiday that, nothing like the make before with the fatals, even though ISP handles, those, our deputies are there as well and assisting with traffic and whoever else is needed, so diverting.
Sheriff, how many ISP officers do we have onboard? Do you know, do you know?
There's two.
Yep. Are they slut, are they supposed to have three or four, or is it just?
It's whatever. There's, for a long time, we had three. We had one in McCall, one in Donnelly, one Cascade, so.
We'd like to have three.
What's that?
It'd be nice to have three.
Yeah, but they're having a hard time, you know.
Hiring two, yes. Had a lot of questions about why there, why there is not more ISP on 55 versus ours.
Bill, they, yep, you have to look across the state and the areas and where they can recruit, and we've asked that as well, so. I have appointed Deputy Donica and Deputy Pierce to be the recreational deputies in that country, so. I made a promotion in the jail to, to a sergeant deputy McLaughlin. So that'll help Lieutenant LaCroix a lot.
Donica and Pierce, they've been with us for quite some time. I'm not familiar with Pierce. I am Donica.
Well, Pierce was a former deputy up here in Waterways. He worked in Waterways, he worked in Cascade City, worked for us, and now he's back up here, so.
And Danny? Is it Danny, his first name Dan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pierce.
And his dad is one of our conflict attorneys.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Had offered a position in an opening for patrol, and that was turned down due to low wage. They needed more wage to be here, so. Keep trying, but we have a full staff in dispatch, which is good. And the Dispatch Academy was canceled. However, Ada County is putting on one, and we're gonna send two, maybe three to them.
That's good news.
Yeah. Other than that, like, there's a couple things on closeout for fiscal '22 I need to provide for you for dispatch, correct? 911's.
Yes, ma'am.
So, other than that, good.
Okay, any questions for Sheriff? All right, have a great day. Treasurer, Johanna.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Well, if you checked your mail in the last week, you probably received your property tax bill. We were able to get those sent out early last week, and if you listen carefully, you can hear the phone ringing nonstop in the treasurer's office. We'll be busy over the next few weeks collecting the 2022 taxes. The first half is due December 20th. The total amount in tax that was sent out in the tax bills this year So we typically collect around $20 million in the first portion of this that we will then turn over to the clerk's office in January so that we can have funds to staff the budgets, so. The other thing that I wanted to update you about is the resources that we sent out with the tax bill. I emailed a copy of this over to you just this morning, right before the meeting started. So if you have a chance, take a look at the insert that was sent out. Take a look at the two-story maps that were created using McKenzie and Kara. I couldn't have done it without their help. They were amazing in getting those completed. And then the last resource is the taxing districts map. Now shows you a pie graph of where your taxes are distributed. So, you know, only about 20% to 25% of taxes at my house go to Valley County. The rest go to other taxing districts, and it's different for every, every property owner. So a resource that we thought would be valuable for people in Valley County to be able to see where their tax dollars are going.
I think it's a great idea. I think it explains it very simply for a lot of people.
Yeah.
That's, that was awesome.
Hoping to help with some of the questions that we receive and just give people more resources so they understand how county government works.
Where are we on, I want to say it upgrading, but, you know, technologically, being able to not send out notices? I mean, just send out an email saying your notice is online?
So we do currently do that. You have to go in and sign up. BDS is the company that manages that for us. There's a few hiccups in the system that I would like to address, but it's currently not an option for us to do it in-house. So Amentum doesn't provide the software capability for people to log in and download their tax statement. Through the BDS portal, you go in, you create an account, and then you attach a parcel number to your account. It takes about 10 minutes to find the parcel number and attach it. And so we consistently get calls saying it's broken, it doesn't work, and then we have, we sit on the phone for 10 minutes until it pops up. There is also a little bit of error in that system in that, once you've signed up and have a parcel attached to your account, if you were to move or sell the property, it doesn't automatically unattach, and nobody else can attach that parcel to their name. So there is a disclaimer on that web portal that says, "Once you've signed up for electronic statements, you will no longer receive a paper statement." We have gotten rid of that because it, in effect, was not sending property tax statements to the few people that moved in the year and didn't turn off their account. So right now, everyone receives a paper copy of this statement. Eventually, in the future, I'd love to look towards getting electronic statements sent out in a more reliable fashion, but with our current software restrictions, we're not able to do that.
When, you know, is there a code that you have to provide a paper copy, though?
The code was updated recently, and it says you either need to provide a paper or electronic transmission of property tax. So you do have to send a statement regardless of whether there's an amount owed or not. You have to show a recording of what taxes were charged. And then we do not send out reminder statements to those individuals who have paid their entire balance in May.
It was great when we lived down in Canyon County, because you got an email, you hopped on, you saw it, you paid it, and it was seamless.
Yeah.
You could go back in all the time and get a statement if you needed it.
I did a software demo on an upgrade to Amentum that would allow that to happen. It would also allow real-time balances to be viewed. So currently, with the electronic statement option we have, you're only able to see the original amount calculated. We have some property owners who make monthly payments, and they like to know where they're at or how much is left. And you don't have the ability to log in and see that balance. But with this module in Amentum, you would have the ability to do that. It's quite expensive, though, around $30,000. It's quite expensive though, around thirty thousand dollars initial setup and then about twenty thousand dollars a year after that, so, um, compared to.
How many phone calls would that cut in your office?
It would cut several phone calls, um, potentially like half of a staff position. The, uh, amount that we're paying for software right now is very small compared to the amount that this additional upgrade would cost, so.
Johanna, on the ones that are paying monthly, is that, um, first of all, is that a mortgage payment? Is that why?
No, um, month, so on, right on our tax bill, it says monthly payments are accepted, and what that means is that we accept any payment on any taxes. So say your, your total tax bill is a thousand dollars, and you wanna break that up and pay a hundred dollars over the next ten months to get it paid off, you can do that, just write the parcel number on the check and we'll, we accept any amount of payment.
And we can charge interest?
We do charge interest, so if, if you've missed the deadline, you know, there are interest charges that accrue. Um, we just try to give individuals a, some ideas on how to remember to get the payments. A lot of people prepay, so they will send in two hundred and fifty dollars a month all year, and then when we send out the tax bills, they have a zero balance due, so they've prepaid essentially their taxes. Uh, the individuals who have large past due balances, like some of the people who show up on our tax deed list each year, we encourage them to send in monthly payments so that it's not as big of a chunk when it is necessary to pay it right before they lose it due to tax deed or right before it's due in December, so.
Well, and to me, I think really what's nice too is that it shows what I paid in taxes last year on that piece of ground.
Yep.
Because it used to be, well, I gotta go dig that out of my own records to find out, what did I pay last year for taxes, you know?
Absolutely.
That's a nice feature.
Another resource that we would like to develop that we're working on is, is a little bit more history, maybe the past five years, um, showing the amount that taxes have increased or decreased over the past five years, but then overlaying that with assessed values, so that you can very clearly see that even when assessed values spike, your property taxes stay, um, a little bit more in line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any more questions for the Treasurer?
All right.
All right, thanks, have a great day. We're gonna move right on down into our department heads, and I do have an email from Annette, she's not being anything to report today, I have not heard from Skip, so I guess Melissa, you're first up.
Hope everybody had a good holiday.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A, too much, but that's normal.
Yeah. All those comfort foods.
Yeah.
Um, Dr. Petty's invited me, she's the, the statewide director, to do some listening sessions up in North Idaho, and so this week I'll be traveling to go do that. Um, Extension is doing statewide listening sessions, and so these will be, I think, the last two that they do, and they do this every three to five years, and it's part of the strategic planning, uh, to be able to make sure that Extension programs are on track with, with stakeholders throughout the state. And so it's time to check in, and, uh, and I'll be helping with that process. I'll be doing an action item for the standard Extension Agreement. I'll do that shortly, probably in December, we'll get that squared away, and, um, thank you for, for getting that, you know, signed and whatnot, so. Cascade Arts Walk, they're, uh, testing the seasonality of that concept, and so we'll be launching a Christmas tree walk in December and seeing if that works, and if it doesn't, then we'll scratch it, but it's always fun to run a pilot just to see if it works. Continuing to work with the Cascade Mobility Team on bike and pedestrian counts, we do that once every five years, I think it's six years now, because we, we just didn't get it done or didn't feel like it was relevant during the pandemic. And so, that just collects data on how people are using the infrastructure, um, that are, you know, not in, not in an automobile, so people that are on foot, are on wheels.
Um, what data does that? Does that empower grants? What do they use that for?
Yeah, it, it empowers grants and it goes into the, the Bike and Pedestrian Plan that the city adopted, I think it was back in twenty fifteen or around there, um, and it, it's helped with, with acquiring some grants specifically on the Pine Street Corridor, um, with the paving and the school and transit to like how we envision, um, the community being able to move around without a mo, automobile. So it's, it's a little bit of data and it's that low-hanging fruit towards a planning initiative that helps people continue to, to work on something.
So, our team though is the one that's collecting that data, or is the city collecting that data?
The city's part of that team, so that, the Cascade Mobility Team is a supportive volunteer group that helps think about that mobility around the city of Cascade. And then, um, the city of McCall also does bike and street counts occasionally, and so I've spoken with Delta about the initiative and doing it in the northern part, or how Extension can be supportive of that. And it's a lot of like volunteer recruitment and organization, and I think the city in the past had staff count, or they had their, maybe a little more action around those volunteer committees supporting the city, and I don't know if they have that kind of volunteer, um, support in place anymore, because I know they've, they've dissolved some of those committees.
It just, it just feels like we're, we're doing the work for city data, so we gotta make sure we're not spending our time as the Extension Office creating, you know, doing the work for something that should be maybe a city focus.
Yeah, and, and it's something that I do once every five years, and it's that volunteer recruitment, and it's part of that planning process, and so I don't, I don't see it, um, I don't see it as being city staff supplement, but it's part, yeah, it's part of like that capacity building, but I, I hear you. And in January, I'll be doing a Firewise presentation on the Horticulture Expo, and that'll be the first time that I'll, I'll be attending and presenting at that event. Um, I'm excited to, to check that out, it seems like that's kind of the, the big horticulture event of the year.
Where's that at?
Where is it? Yeah.
I haven't registered for it yet. I know it's down in Boise, oh, it's, so I think it might be at The Grove, I think it's somewhere downtown Boise, um, and it's a few days, it's Wednesday to Friday, and there's presenters, and then there's like a lot of tabling, and so you go and there's all the, the nursery and the horticulture folks there, selling products, but also there's educational component. And then I'll be planning spring programs, and so as far as the rotation for horticulture programs, um, Victory Garden and Advanced Master Gardener Series will happen in twenty twenty-three, um, because I offer the Master Gardener Program every other year, and so the Master Gardener Program won't happen again until twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Um, but I am working with Liz Jones and exploring possibility of, you know, where, because Victory Garden is mostly online, but then we do in-person sessions with the Master Gardeners just a couple of times to make sure that it's Valley County relevant, um, because gardening here is really a different, a different type of endeavor.
Yes, it.
And then I've been working on annual required university training, and then annual review season and reporting continues. I have most of the reporting done, but there's, there's a little bit more reporting I need to wrap up before the end of the month. All the staff, except for myself, attended a 4H training in October, and, um, so Katie was able to go to that, and that was a good onboarding process. Jill went for a day and then Allison was there, um, and that's the, the big, not the, the national 4H conference, but the statewide training happens in October, um, so that was good timing. Animal market sale checks went out and open enrollment began for the new 4H year starting in October, um, and I can have Allison come in and give, give an update because it's been a little while, so. Any questions?
Do you know, did all the checks come in for the 4H?
I, I believe there's still a few that are pending, um, but yeah, Allison can speak more to the details of that.
Okay. Um, I know in the past the Commissioners helped collect those, if they haven't gotten them in, usually around November, do they still have the policy where none of the kids get their money until all the money's in, or has that changed?
I mean, I think, I think that's the policy they try to keep, and I think maybe this year it, it might have been a little different, and that, that is working with the Animal Market Sale Committee, so we're supportive of that, that committee, but not necessarily the owners of that process.
I'll, I'll get ahold of Allison and see.
Yep, and then Sue is, is on the Animal Market Sale Committee and a pretty pivotal member of that group, so. Sue Leeper.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. Okay, any more questions for Melissa?
Yeah, Melissa, I noticed the other day your Highway sign for your directions.
Yes. I've contacted them twice, and I did receive a response saying that they would have people take it down, and so I imagine that'll happen soon.
So, so one other question to kind of help me out on this, for the Master Gardener, how does that, uh, how, how's that used generally speaking for, um, the community?
So, I like to think of the Master Gardeners kind of as my, my community development and beautification volunteer cohort, because, um, there's all these positive externalities that happen from that training, and the difference between just the Victory Garden Series where people learn how to garden and the Master Gardener Program is that when people sign up for the Master Gardener Program, they're also committing to give back thirty hours individually per year, that initial year, and then fifteen hours each additional year they stay in the program. And so, I find that, um, probably about half the cohort actually follows through because getting people to volunteer is difficult, um, but then the people that do stay on board, they stay on board for multiple years, and they're just really active in the community. Is that me? I swear I have this thing turned off. I don't know how to turn my phone off, anyway. Truth comes out. And so, things that they've done in the past, um, well, just for example, this past year, we, um, as a cohort, put in a drip irrigation system at the, the garden behind the McCall High School, and so we did that just because they were having a lot of time, hard time with weeds and they were overhead watering, and so if you do more targeted watering, you could kind of like direct where you want plants to grow and, and, you know, make it a harsher environment in other places, and so that was one of the community projects that we did this past year. The Master Gardeners also serve on, um, committees, and so there's a lot of Master Gardeners, or ex-Master Gardeners even, that are on committees down at the Cascade, Pride of the Pantry plots, there's a lot of Master Gardener activity at the Community Garden in New Meadows, and then a lot of the Master Gardeners, mostly ex-Master Gardeners, like they, they did the program, but they're not necessarily officially involved, but they're still active volunteers. A lot of the Donnelly Farmers Market volunteers that you see there that are helping greet and do all the good stuff, those are, a, a good portion of them are Master Gardener Oaks too.
Through this program, yeah.
We actually had two of them do weed, uh, control, what, year before last?
Yeah, they went out with Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we don't, we, we don't have Sam anymore, he, he stepped out of the program, but it was really exciting to see that connection, and I always have Steve, uh, come and present to the group, he's one of our, one of the favorites, like people really enjoy watching Steve Anderson present and learn about the, the invasive weeds, um, and how they can manage those on their property and also be advocates for management of those. And so the Master Gardener Program is kind of more than I ever expected it to be, it's beyond just training people how to garden, it's, it's capacity building, it's getting them plugged into volunteer opportunities, and then it's really fun to see, um, how people contribute. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. One I like about it too is that they trade, seeds they trade, root stock, they trade back and forth with each other, and everybody kind of shares, it's great.
I think there's a huge part of the Firewise program that could fit into that too, learning about fire waste plants and, you know, how to maintain your property for fire waste.
And we do that training, but it's specific to the math, the people that sign up for Master Gardeners, and so if that's a focus or an area that's in need, um, and I do think it is, and that's kind of why I raised my hand at the Horticulture Expo, um, I'll be developing, and I have a, I have a presentation already developed that I do for the Master Gardeners, but I'm gonna be beefing that up because I'm like, oh my gosh, this is the, the real big thing, you know? And so I'll have this nice presentation, I'll make sure I, I share that locally throughout the year as well, um, and so if that is an area of interest or need, I'm always happy to be responsive to needs, and so, um, I can, I can make that publicly available a little bit more than I have in the past.
Yeah, well, it's a really neat program, I appreciate people doing it, it's, uh,
I mean, oh my gosh.
Focus on this.
It is, it's just, the people that step in and volunteer in that program, it's just really, it's like citizen leadership, um, and it's a good way for people new to the area to plug into the area and build a community, and, uh, and there's, there's some recent volunteers that I had in this last batch that have just stepped up to, to serve in really, um, serve in wonderful ways, so the, that, there's one volunteer I'm thinking about specifically that's done a lot of work up in McCall, and she was the reason why we essentially, um, had been working with that community garden behind the high school and, and, you know, why we've organized to, to do these field days, and then she actually led like a, a weekly gathering to be able to get that space into shape because there's so much work, and then the kids got involved, and the teachers got involved, and then, you know, it's kind of like once, once someone steps up to be the leader, it's fun to watch other people follow and lead, so there's been a lot of cool outcomes.
Good. You figure out a way to turn a lot of lawns into gardens, that's funny.
Yeah, well, and that's, or, or zero-scaping, I mean, the community development and the, the property retail values or whatever with beautification efforts, um, it, I think it shows, I've, I've always tried to figure out how to tie those things together, but, um, there's a lot of community pride when you see people take care of their yard and, versus going to a community where, you know, there's weeds and it's overgrown, it just, it says different things about how people value place, and so, um, the Community Garden, or the Master Gardener Program really helps people show their pride in where they live.
Yeah. Being in forested areas, you know, the weed component I think is really important that people help identify, because my subdivisions last year was horrible.
Yes.
Unbeknownst to people, I was going around and spreading weeds.
That's one of the, one of the areas as far as I'm concerned in the county, it really does need, um, elevated attention, this, this weed thing, and I was in, I was involved with something this last summer and some kids were, and some, one of the, kind of, maybe juvenile programs that goes on around the YCC, YACC, you know, type of things, and they had gotten involved, like in particular, one was in Adams County, as volunteers with the weed thing, and I was hoping that we also have a pretty strong connection to those groups with, maybe with, um, um, Steve and his programs too, so we could kind of maybe start getting some emphasis going a bit more on that side of it, you know? Like I say, yeah, there's a lot of people look like they're raising, uh, knappweed as a crop, you know?
Oh, yeah. I hate to admit it, but it is everywhere, including.
Yeah.
Around my house too, not in my yard, but, you know, I think it's in everybody's neighborhood.
I think that's a broader discussion on how the weed department is managed, I know we do a lot of contract work for cities and the Forest Service, and maybe what we need to do is rethink those contracts and, and emphasize more on private property.
Yeah.
But we're gonna have to get Brian Oak involved on this because some of it is gonna be enforcement, and how hard a ball do you want to play with this, because you can play pretty, pretty hard with weeds. It's willing to take that step.
Yeah, people are very passionate about, um, how they manage their land and have values surrounding that, and even attachment to, um, noxious weeds, and, um, and so it is a cultural behavior change, it's a shift, and education does play a part in it. Talking with the Master Gardeners this past fall at our meeting, in the pa, in the past we've done our plant clinics, and we were doing them, rather than in other counties, people have them at their office, and they, they have people come to their office for a plant clinic, and I thought, that doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't really work as well in Valley County when you expect people to come to you, and so I was like, well, where can we go out into the community where people are already at? And so we went to the farmers markets, and we were having a conversation about pivoting from the farmers markets, because I feel like we probably saturated that group as well, that audience, and we were talking about going to the invasive, um, weed Friday sprays and having our plant clinics at that venue to add more gravity, I don't know if it would, but, but at least it, it, it's putting two things in one place, and so it would be like, if you want to come and talk to a Master Gardener about gardening, or if you want to learn about invasives, oh, and hey, look, it, there's all these cool programs where you can get the chemical and the tank equipment and go spray, um, so we, we did talk about that the fall, thinking about, you know, creating our, our plant clinics to be at those events, which is primarily, I think, on the, the Friday throughout the summer in McCall, um, but we could explore if those events happen, or if we could create some throughout the valley, but it is on the radar, is an important topic for the Master Gardeners, and we did actually talk about changing the location of the plant clinics to be in parallel on those spray days.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay, we gotta move on. Anyway, okay, we got to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next victim is Pat.
Not a victim.
Good morning.
Good morning. I don't have a lot to report. I think it's because I'm trying to get caught up. Taking those few days off last week. But as, as Doug said, the clerk said, Nicole Enter started last week. And I'll finish the onboarding this week. And then we do have a new facilities person starting
Oh, good.
On Thursday. And then we have a new appraiser starting on December fifteenth. So I'll send the email to you all on Thursday about our two new ones right now.
Yes, yes, yes.
Buildings and grounds, is that like an apprentice still or?
Yeah, he does have a little bit of experience. But it will be, he'll be going through the apprentice program as well. He has enough experience. I brought him in as a facility one instead of as an apprentice. But he'll be going through that program just to get more rounded.
That's good news.
Yeah, yeah. So that's really what I have. What questions do you have for me? I didn't send out to you the form and the pass notes for our executive this afternoon, but I'll bring copies.
Okay.
And the director has those.
So where are we at at the road department in getting snowplow drivers?
I wish I could, I wish I could stay.
No good news there.
No, and I'm not sure what the issue is. I really need to take a look at the job posting and try it again. Usually about this time of year, we'll start getting some applications, but I haven't, I don't have anything.
So in the paper this last week, there was a whole article on the bus Harlow's is actually providing CDL training and getting that into the high school. So I thought that was awesome. Our CAT team for the Economic Development Council on Transportation had identified that as a need, both for the county and for some others.
I know. And it's a problem because the DOT changed it so that you have to go to a class to get, to get a CDL. The CDL, I think it's a B for the, the buses and the public transportation. This is right in my line of sight. There we go. They, they are not as extensive as a Class A CDL. And so it is a two-week program. I did find out, however, the Department of Labor does have funds available. So if somebody wants to become a Class A CDL, they'll help them pay for it. And it's about eighty percent of the cost. So there's somebody that would fit well within the road department. I would love to hire him, but he doesn't have a Class A CDL. And so I'm gonna, and I've been meaning to reach out to him for a week. But I'm going to reach out to him and say, you know, you can get this paid for. The problem is he lives up here and the classes are in the Boise area. So that's a need. We need to figure out how we could at least set up a class every once in a while up here. And I'm not sure how we do that.
Well, couldn't we just pay for that if we got a good candidate?
I'd love to do it through the Department of Labor since they have the money there and save our funds.
I think the issue is hotels and meals and stuff. You have to be down there for two weeks straight.
Be checked with.
A lot of the trucking companies will pay for all that stuff if they'll sign with that.
Some of them will, some of them will.
Seems to make sense if we had an opportunity to find someone that we feel is a good candidate, that we'd invest that in.
Yes, yeah.
I've been in the job training, something or other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a conversation that we, that I can have with Jeff about that. He's tried in the past to teach people how to do the, the driving of the trucks, so the practical side of it.
Yeah.
And it has not at all been successful. So he's reluctant to try it again. But we got to do something because we don't have anything. So it's not just the truck, obviously, that we're looking for. We also need people that can operate equipment there. So the Class A CDL is one part of it, but it's so much more. So I, I need to have a conversation with Jeff and I need to find out who the people are that do the training for the CDL. Maybe there's enough of a need up here that they could come up, you know, maybe once every six months and do the training. I don't know. But I think, I'm sure the Granite would appreciate having their people here to learn as well. As, as OK gravel works and.
I've asked the Stidnite Advisory Council if they would provide funding for that.
That's a good idea.
Because, you know, should the mine be approved, that's a mitigating factor because they're going to take CDL drivers out of here. So let them pay for, you know, being able to do some of that.
Do you have that connection?
Most employers pay, you know, pay for some training and that just seems to me like
Yeah, I agree.
And I hear what you're saying, and I think it's a great idea. It's a matter of budget and finding the right people that have that equipment and then the practical side of it that goes with it. So there's, it's, it's complicated.
Workforce Development Council. As far as funding for that type of a, a project. And we might be able through the Economic Development Council to create that opportunity. We've done chef's training. We've done knife skills. We've done construction work paid for by the Workforce Development Council.
Well, we could work with Department of Labor as well. Because I think Michael's probably got a good hold on the different employers here and what they're looking for. Joni at the school is actually helping. She's got the certification or whatever needed. But she's been training on the CDLs for their bus drivers when they find people. But they haven't been able to find anybody to even want to go through the training. So they are struggling with the bus drivers there. She's just really, she said, I have janitors and teachers and others that are driving buses and that's unfortunate. So, you know, it's not just us that's struggling with this, so.
I think it's a regional conversation. Yeah, that's a huge hole and a need.
That it might be to contact Jerry Morgan to see if any of those truck drivers are interested. They're all CDL plus truck drivers and, you know, they've kind of folded up. Got rid of a lot of their stuff. So they may have some drivers that we're looking for work too. Just something popped in my head.
I have, I know a teacher that could do it, but I don't know whether he would or not. And it's, you know, he's full time, so. Yeah. Anyway, that, that's exciting news that we could get funding for DOL, but it's a matter of finding people. So.
I think, again, it starts with our youth. They have to understand the job careers that are out there. How they could actually.
And we've been, I've been over at the school with their career day as well. So if we can continue that, maybe.
Have you been in McCall, Donley?
No, I've got to find somebody to do that there. Christine over at the council over at the school is really good about reaching out, saying, we're doing this, can you come? And that's how we, we got connected, so.
Meeting the superintendent in the morning, maybe I could ask him that question too, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This contact person.
Dee Dee Phillips is really involved in McCall as well, so. She's a good resource. So I'll just reach out to her. Actually, I might, I might have that information somewhere from her, but I do need to reach out to them. Yes, I agree. Even though I'm trying to keep my things straight. The, a CDL driver does not have to be eighteen to go through the, no, that's the apprenticeship. I think a CDL driver has to be twenty-one. That throws up another wrench, if I remember right. So I'll have to look into that.
What would a CDL?
Especially it used to be sixteen, you can, you could get a CDL at sixteen years old.
And I might be wrong. I might be getting it confused with something else.
And if we work with the EDC a little bit, we can also bring in New Meadows.
Mm-hmm, yes.
New Meadows is really focused on CTE training. And so that might be an avenue.
Right, right.
Well, and you know, if the economy gets pretty rough, there'll be a lot of contractors that won't have work. Maybe we'll pick some up then, but who knows?
I know. Usually in the winter time, we'll pick up some just because they don't want to have to, you know, they work for Granite or whatever and they, or wherever in the valley, and they don't want to go to Boise to work.
Right.
And so then they'll start looking. I, you know, I can look at the wages again, but I don't know how we, I don't know how we fix the wages unless we carve out the road department separate from everything else. Like we've done the sheriff, but even then it's not going to fix it. We still have to stay within budget.
No, but I think we should keep that an option. Parking them out and doing a separate salary deal for that. I think that's appropriate when you can't get truck drivers.
Yeah. But they're still up there because it's not just driving truck and that's.
Equipment operator, yeah.
Yeah, there are also operators. And so it, it does become complicated. And one of the things that when you're doing the salary survey, you have to put the two together and know that, okay, equipment operators are here and drivers are here, vice versa. And somewhere in the middle is where you're going to put the salary. It's, it's not easy.
It's a challenge.
Uh-huh, that's where all these white hairs have come from, but. Right, any other questions?
Don't think so.
Okay, my time's up.
We have extra time this morning. Skip's not coming today either.
Hey, Skip's not coming here. Just got that one, so it will be Cindy. Trying to find Jeremy. Cindy, go ahead.
Jeremy's on vacation.
Oh, that's right.
So I received two appeals of P and Z Commission decisions and I'd like to get those scheduled in January. As soon as you set your calendars. But what I was thinking was having them on two separate days. So we don't overwhelm ourselves doing staff reports and parking and everything else done.
You sent us the dates, didn't you, Cindy?
I did, but I'm, Doug, do you have those calendars approved yet or?
Yeah, they're going to do that at eleven forty-five.
After that, we can set the hearings.
One for January third and one for January seventeenth, so.
No, well, I think I had January ninth and January seventeenth, or was it January third?
The one I got from you.
January third.
January third. That's on the Tamarack Falls.
Yeah.
And then the ninth or the seventeenth, I think, was for
Bruttsman.
The Bruttsman, whichever day.
Bruttsman. And we'll get the calendar, then we'll get those scheduled with Doug.
Okay.
Do you expect those to be pretty long?
Well, the Tamarack Falls one will be. That's why I'd like it set for like three and then just go till you're done.
Make it at the end of the day agenda and then we can go as long as we need.
And Bruttsman wasn't, wasn't, didn't have a lot of opponents to it.
Anything else?
Oh, yes. I'm going to take up your time now. I'll be quick. Impact Area Planning and Zoning Commission has determined what they want to recommend. We're writing it up and they're going to give it their final approval December eighth.
And then we'll get a chance to look at that before it's given to McCall City?
No, we, we will be giving it to you as a recommendation.
Okay, good.
It is between the P and Z Commission and you. We won't be sending it out to everybody unless, of course, there's a public information request. Capital Improvement Program, we went through that. They have the data on it. They're going to be reviewing it and then they will make some sort of a recommendation also on December eighth. Now that we've been working with the Form seventy-four sixty dash one, the FAA, we know what to expect and know what's, what's going on. And so I will be writing up that ordinance and I think we're going to stick with the the radius, radiuses around the airports versus just everybody in Valley County. Because we're getting some really interesting false positives where people have to fill out the form. And they're nowhere near an airport. So.
What is the radius around the airport? Five miles?
Three to five. I, I think we said it, we were going to go five. But I think ITD was recommending like three point five or three. Or whatever they're recommending is what we'll go with. And Kara has prepared maps showing that on a GIS layer.
And you're doing it for all three airports?
Cascade, Donley and McCall.
Good.
Well, there's also airports.
In Yellow Pine?
Yellow Pine.
Those aren't public airports funded by, have to do the, so just the three abundant. We're just in the public airports. Otherwise, I mean, there's grass strips all over the county.
Does the result of that have any bearing on anything that we already have approved around those airports, Cindy, do you think? Outcome of that one, the analysis?
Well, the subdivisions we approved south of McCall, they did the Form seventy-four sixty dash one. And each one of those homes will have one. Is that what you're asking?
In other words, it won't change anything that's already in progress there as far as development?
No, we can't retroactively apply any ordinance. Working with Mackenzie on the public information notice on the flood plains and getting flood insurance. She's supposed to get back to me this week and tell me how many words I get. So, and how big the postcard can be. That should be.
That's what we have to do is we have to tell you how many words you get.
Well, I don't, I mean, it has gone to postcards. She's going to tell me the size of the postcard. So I need to know, you know,
Perfect.
how much message I can give and, and if it just needs to be a, by the way. Let's see, received the final Logan Simpson invoice this morning. And I'll get that sent to Doug.
Cindy, when are we going to have a, the next go around of that from a standpoint of review?
Logan Simpson and adoption of the Waterways Management Plan? Oki's working on a memo to make a recommendation on how we process that. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that's what we're, we're working through that.
So on your committee, did anyone ever, did we request that people that are obligated funding actually pay for that? That request? I think Tamarack had said that they were going to give some from the cities, you know, on a funding basis. Have we ever been paid?
Did you ever invoice or?
For the plan?
Yeah, we'd had some commitments for.
We've res-
Have you received anything?
Yeah, the let me see who last payment we've received. I can tell you the city of McCall is paid, the city of Donley is paid. If you wouldn't mind, I'll let me research and I'll let the commissioners know. That'd be great.
And if you can CC me on that also, please. And then finally, after all these years, we have the grant of easement for the drainage easement north of Schultz Lane. They prepared, you know, you, you previously approved it, you purchased it. The easement has been prepared and approved by Oki. They have signed it. I have the original, it's notarized and the commissioners need to sign it, have it notarized and please record it. So I'll just.
We do that eleven forty-five. That's on the agenda at eleven forty-five.
Okay. I didn't see it.
Well, that's what Jeff, Jeff's not going to be here.
That's a what?
West Roseberry, this is what this is, isn't it?
That's what that is.
Is that what this is? Okay.
Think so, yeah.
Jeff's not going to be here though, so.
Well, I will leave it with you. Is that okay?
That's the executive session. Why did that take so long? We approved that thing.
Nobody followed through on it. And then they're selling the property and the realtor, who are all my friends, noticed that that wasn't done. And so before she sold the property.
We're going to have to improve our process on some of this stuff that we do these types of things and then nobody follows through. So now I'll start documenting on my calendar, so I don't know.
Well, that was the road department. It was kind of the road department's push, but it saved us a lot, you know, to get it and do it.
That was quite a while ago. I think we were kind of in some transitions and new people and jobs and. Anyway, taking care of, the realtor noticed it wasn't done. She happened to know all about it and so she said, oh, you guys didn't get that easement perfected, so there it is. She was doing that before it's sold.
Anything else?
We're just continuing to be busy.
Um, I did go through the bylaws. I don't know, there's really not much changes to, we could do that one.
Nope, not just, they're just a basic bylaw that you know, gives us leeway to react and act. Given, you know, her friends.
Some of it needs to be updated. And it's not like we got to do it right now, but Article four meetings. And then it talks about consecutive meetings that you can miss and then you're automatically removed.
For the playing zoning?
Yeah.
We should probably put that on the agenda.
Probably should sit down and talk about. Probably should sit down and talk about that. And see what you think.
But, you know, a couple of questions that I had is, um, I was wondering if you had done any kind of analysis for the last several months on attendance? And that was one thing.
I've asked, Lori was gone and I emailed her last week and asked her if, if she would. She has the list. That's how we pay their mileage, who attends and who doesn't attend.
Is it, you know, my understanding, it would have been lightly attended the last several, so I was just wondering if that is actually true.
It's been an interesting year.
Yeah, and, um, we also have, it sounds like, uh, some applicants that would like to be on that playing zoning, so.
Yes.
Need to miss opportunities there if we have an opportunity to do something different. We do need, um, we need adequate number of people looking at these applications.
Right. We, we haven't had that many three people meetings. Um, most of the attendance issues come up when we have a work session because they're not necessarily as obligated.
It'd be interesting to see that.
Yeah, we're, I'll get you those numbers. I've.
Well, I think that's certainly a part of it, but also a part of it is if they're actively involved in the discussion, they're actually actively contributing to the meeting, I think that's important as well.
Um, there'll be two positions, one of them for sure. Um, I'm expecting a letter of interest from the other person whose term expires. And we have interviews scheduled in December. Or the two positions.
Are we doing the interviews?
Mm-hmm. You guys always do the interviews.
That's what I thought. Okay, so you're the.
Unless you'd like me to choose. No, thank you.
We have them scheduled for December twelfth, beginning at two o'clock.
And one of the applicants, who I don't have his letter yet, says he can't make that date. He wants to know if we can schedule a different date, like maybe the fifth. So I'll work with Doug on that. Okay.
Doug, you said the twelfth at two? Okay, anything else for Cindy? I guess that's it then. Thank you.
If we could have that analysis maybe before the fifth, if that's the first.
I could probably have it ten minutes from the time I walk out this door. She was catching up on her emails.
If we're gonna review some of this particular bylaws, that should be very soon, you know, in this process. We do have some opportunities here.
Oh, yeah, we can get that scheduled. I plan on taking a couple of days off in December, just to let you know.
Well, Doug, if we have a short agenda next week, we could throw it on next week for half an hour. If we got a full agenda, it's something that can wait.
We probably should also involve Neil in that conversation. So we should probably involve Neil in that conversation too.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever it's there.
We'll move on down the list. Mr. Laxson. Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman, Commissioners, Clerk. Of course, this isn't a busy time of year at all. Crazy. Um, United Pay at Lees came back and there were some objections, objections from the United Pay at um, steering committee, so they drew up some red lines and sent it back to IDL. IDL's looking at it and once they work that out, it still has to go back to the AG's office. So we're probably looking January at the earliest of seeing on, anything on that. Um, Ten to Land Allocation Committee meeting. Uh, PFC meeting, little disappointed on that. We were supposed to receive, uh, um, the plans for the next Granite Meadows project. It isn't ready yet. Uh, they said they'd send it out about a week before the next PFC meeting and when they do, I'll send that to you guys just to see what's happened on that. Um, I think I told you last time that, uh, I was concerned about uh, the new cat isn't gonna show up in time, so we're doing many maintenance on the old cat, just preparing it so we can use it for a month or so. Also had a pickleball meeting. It seems to me like there's gonna be a lot of pickleball meetings. These ladies have so much energy. I'm, I'm really impressed, to be honest with you. I wish I could harness some of that stuff. They're great. Uh, Wellington Roof, the only thing left is the facade for the front of the, the south facing front of the chimney and they're supposed to come up and set that and then that's all done. Be happy to get beyond that. Uh, we're working on grants. Uh, we're gonna lot of our signage. Uh, one thing we didn't do in the past is put our county codes on the signs. So every one of our signs will have county codes on it when we're done. So that, that helps not only us and the people reading them, plus people enforcing them.
And those are gonna be metal signs?
They're all aluminum, yeah.
Yeah, good, good.
Is it a QR code or actual verbiage?
It'll be just the code. It won't have the verbiage of the code. Yeah, that would, boy, that'd be another big project.
I'm wondering though, can they scan it and actually read it? Cause if you're just listing.
You know, we could probably get a QR code made and stick it on there. That would be a fairly simple thing.
I mean, if you don't know the code, I mean, that's what I'm saying. If you just have a code in front of you, you don't have any idea what it references.
And most QR codes just take you back to a website. This would have to be a specific website.
I'm gonna, I'll ask Jeremy if it can take us back to that exact spot on the website rather than just start at the, at the front.
Yeah, that'd be tough, but it might, you might.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not an IT guy. I'll ask him, but I think it's a great idea to have that QR code on there. Of course, we've always gotta talk about no business road. It did get plowed again. They have not signed the permit. It got, uh, plowed right down to the edge of the, of the ice.
When did it get plowed?
Just the other day.
Just the other day, when?
Maybe this mor- excuse me, this morning Danny was out there right now and there's a little bit of argument about where the center line is. So I gotta go out and meet with them again because they're, they're in quite a ways now and so, anyway, we'll get that part worked out.
Amazing.
They haven't signed the leash yet?
Uh, they haven't signed the permit with Jeff yet. They did sign the MOU, but the contractor has not signed yet. And it's, uh, anyway, it's just gonna be an ongoing issue. Uh. And advisory, uh, we've got, I think you guys have seen six people have signed up for our advisory board. Looks good. Looks like we're getting some guys, you know, the fifteenth's the last day, so be nice to get a few more. Then we can go through them and hopefully have some decisions.
Lauren, I think it's important that if we have to open that up, to get a representative from all the different recreation amenities. It's not that I don't wanna load it with Simba guys, because I think that's, that's not the intent or that's not what's happening, but we need motorized, non-motorized, rafting, boating, snowmobile. I mean, uh, we can't just have all a couple of trail guys.
No, and, and.
So we may have to extend that.
So we did receive, uh, uh, one this morning. I sent you guys already. And that's a good one. And I've been talking to Cindy about, uh, individual down in, uh, Smith Ferry and she thinks there's some potential there, so. Yeah, I know, and, and, you know, I've, I've, we've got ideas, but the problem is most of our ideas are all people in McCall. All great people, great opportunity, but we do want it to be throughout.
Donley I gave too, that is very well rounded.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then with Jeff from Cascade, that'll help out a little bit. Anyway, a lot of things, my phone started ringing this morning before seven and it hasn't stopped yet. It's, uh, a long weekend.
Are you full on your groomers?
Uh, we've got, yeah, we've got a lot of training to do, but we, we've got the people in place to get it done now. As long as people show up, you know, last year we had a few people that made it through halfway through the season and then quit. So, but we've got some backups this time, so we're gonna try to do, it's expensive, but we're gonna try to do a little more training so we can get people used to them and, and, uh. I think it's gonna be a good year if it ever snows. Definitely don't have enough. I've been talking.
Knock on wood. I said Brundage is gonna have forty-four inches by the end of the week.
I talked to Rob at Brundage this morning and he said the only place they can take care of is where they're making snow. Rest of it, they can't put a tiller down, so they can't groom. You know, we did do a little bit. We went out to, uh, Claiborne and, uh, just kinda cut it, packed it, but, uh, by the time we got back in, we had to back off, so we're, we're shut down right now.
I'm more concerned about wet snow on top of dry snow.
I would love to have some wet snow. There is no moisture in this at all and it's, it's so been so cold that even that base, it's sucking the, the moisture out of that base and the base is starting to fall apart. And that's a real concern for avalanches down the road and, and stuff like that. You know, and, and, and of course, the, the comment always is, uh, there's more snow up on top at Landmark and, uh, at Seashash Summit. But those are the two roads that are blacktop and we don't dare put those cats on that road because of the picks on the, I mean, we'll, we'll hurt the blacktop and, and so we're really careful about that. We make sure we got a good solid base before we put the cats on those. And of course, like everything, everybody else, we're concerned about diesel.
Well, you did a big one by filling those tanks last spring.
Oh, my gosh. That, that was a roll of the dice that paid off. I was so worried about paying, you know, paying that for the diesel and having price drop again, but boy, that was a winner for us, yeah.
That was a good call.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
Um, how short are you on groomers?
Uh, as far as employees?
You know, one time you said it was five.
I, I, no, we're, we're down. We've got the people now. I'd like to have one more guy at Smith Ferry and I'm talking to a guy that has groomed, uh, Pilot Speak for years. And, uh, he, he said he might be wanting to come up one or two days and that gives me the opportunity to take our guy from there and who's got a lot of experience, is great with people and great with cats, put him in Anderson Creek and some of the other areas to help do some training. So that's, that's the key thing is having those, uh, four people that can train. That, that's the hardest part of the whole. Because like we've said in the past, groomers, two years. First year, you learn to drive the machine. Second year, you learn to groom.
Well, it is harder than you think.
It's a lot harder than anybody thinks. Uh, I won't even set, so you've got the opportunity to set, I, I know we're kinda going down that road, but. Uh, you say you can either set the groomer at a certain speed or you can use the throttle. I personally use the throttle because if I make a mistake, I just get off the throttle and it stops. Cause it can head the wrong direction real easy.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Oh, I guess not.
Thanks, guys. No dances, please.
Careful how hard you're dancing, please.
So we're gonna move right on down. Scott, come on up. You need a break?
Yeah, please.
Sorry, Scott. We'll come back at, at ten thirty.
Thank you.
Well, whenever you're ready, Doug.
Live again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, welcome back. We're gonna continue on down our agenda.
I think he mentioned.
Our next agenda item is buildings of grounds. Scott, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. So let's, I'll start with kind of solid waste. Um, we closed the Worm Lake Transfer Site on last Thursday. I want to say the homeowners association and the lodges and everybody else there did a great job this year. It looks great out there. And, uh, so, um, and then Seesaw, he halved, uh, halted all, um, dumping of, uh, yellow pine till the first of the year. Things are slowing down out there. So, um, yeah, things, uh, um, should have an excavator up at the, uh, transfer site today, um, to start, so they can burn the pile. And things, I talked with Juan about that last week. And see if we can get the Southern Idaho Timber Association up there, cause Eric, who kind of maintains the pile that works for Lakeshore is not really quite sure how to maintain the pile with an excavator. He's used to using a cat. So let's see if we can, uh, um, get some up there to kind of give him some pointers and stuff on how to maintain it. But, uh, it'll be up there. So next time we have a clear, clear from DEQ or something, we can go ahead and, and get that going.
So Scott, you say, do you have a date for starting it? Did you, did they?
Starting what?
The burn.
Well, when they get clarification from DEQ.
Right now is the best winter we've had since who knows when.
Yeah. Well, we just, the excavator is supposed to be delivered today. So as soon as Juan feels it's okay, then he'll
Yeah.
go ahead and light it off.
Seven. Man, what are we doing on the construction debris?
Well, I, you know, that's, uh, gotta talk with Lakeshore more on that, what they're gonna do with it and stuff.
Good.
Yeah, that's their, their problem.
Storm the ball back into your court, which I like.
Yeah, um, talk with them. They've, uh, I say they, uh, this group that has, that we have now that you guys met seem to be pretty responsive and really, uh, wanna, uh, get things done. Terry was, when I talked, I talked to him and it was a, can't remember the other guy's name now. Um, they got that excavator up there right away or got right on it. And, um, so they'll have it up there. Um, that's about it for the solid waste. Um, repairs are complete up at the senior center where we had the fallout in the kitchen and stuff. Um, may look at, if we're gonna continue using that swamp core, if we just wanna take it off the roof and maybe look at putting a duckless split or something in. Um, kind of finds out what direction we're gonna go with the senior center up there. If we're gonna get grants to do work on it and stuff, then, um, maybe look at doing that. But up there.
Scott, just to let you know, we did receive a payment from our insurance company for thirty-one hundred dollars for damage.
Okay. So I, I'm not quite sure, you know, I haven't worked with ICrim before. I mean, so Castle Mountain Homes did the repair. Did they pay them too? Or did they pay that to us and then we will pay, um, Castle Mountain?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I did, I met with an adjuster, um, last week. He came up and looked at the carpeting in the EOC and, uh, determined what we're gonna, what direction we're gonna go. He wanted to know who the installer was and, uh, and stuff. But that was done, you know, a while back. I don't think we can go back on. Dylan Boss did it out of, uh, I think it was out there.
Yeah, it's been on the floor for, geez.
Yeah, since it was built.
Ten years?
Yeah. And then, you know, and that was kind of the deal with, with the tile, the carpet tiles that they're kind of made to come up. It's kind of the thing with them. So if, say, someone burns one or damages one, you can peel that one up and put another one back down. So, um, like I said, I'm just kind of waiting to hear back on what direction they're gonna go with that up there and stuff. Um, let's see. Um, I did, uh, order a snow bucket for our skids deer.
He's out here plowing right now.
Yeah. We haven't got it yet, but, uh, so we can move more snow and stuff. Um, you see, they kind of, they got a temporary fix on our leak out there, so it's not running down in front of the, uh, but I don't think we should accept that as a permanent fix. I mean.
Is that what that hole is?
Yeah. They, um, went in there and, and broke into the, to the, to the drain there and put a screen over it and diverting the water into the drain there right now. But that hasn't fixed the cause. And we gotta do something, cause you can see, you know, the, the damages upstream of their fix, you know, our parking lot in front of the EOC and, and stuff. Um, it still needs to be, be addressed on, you know, getting the cause of it fixed.
And you're doing that through the city?
Well, the city's the one that did that. I mean, they're the one that came over and did it.
Did this little repair, but.
Yeah. So, you know, they were supposed to have had granite come, you know, but we were, they, they just were so overscheduled that they never did get here and, you know, seriously, you know, try to find what the ca, or where the leak is. So.
They diverted it into the drain? So into the city's?
Sewer.
Well, it's into the storm drain.
Oh, it's a storm drain?
Yeah, that's, that, that big grate that right there, you know, that's kind of an area in storm drain. So no, it's not going into the city sewer or anything.
It just drains downstream.
Yeah, that stuff is what they did with that there. So, um, we got the tree, you can see the tree was got removed, um, there. Um, we do, um, another issue we came across is, um, I, I have to talk to the fire marshal. We have, we have fire dampers in your ductwork around here. So every time, uh, um, the HVAC penetrates a wall, anything penetrates a firewall, it has to be fire called around it. Um, we have, um, there are dampers, um, in the ductwork. Uh, we had two of them fail on the third floor where they go in, where the ductwork actually goes into the men's and women's room. Um, they got real cold and then we couldn't figure out why. And we got up there in the ceiling and there. So I had, uh, had them checked out. They are bad. We checked others. We had three of five of them were bad. So we're gonna have to go through the three-story over there and check all the fire dampers and make sure they're, uh, working properly. I thought that would kind of be part of the fire inspection that we have to have every year, but I guess it's not. But I wanna talk with, uh, our fire chief here and see.
And those are electronically controlled?
They're, they're, well, anytime the power goes out or anytime the panels trip, they automatically close. And then when the power comes back or things are cleared, the actuator is supposed to open back up. But what we found is both the ones going into the men's and women's room, the way we found it is they're freezing cold in there. There was no heat getting into those bathrooms. And, um, right out in that foyer, there's actually five of them out there. Um, so why they were inspecting those, I had, um, uh, Cascade Refrigeration, they came up and, um, and looked at it. I manually reopened them is what I did. I could get up there and turn, turn the rod and open it. So we got heat back in there. And they still function. If, if we killed the power to them, they still closed. They just won't open back up. So we, um, I had to look at inspecting wall and see how, if we have others that are not, you know, functioning properly and stuff. And, uh.
Is that something that you can fix or is that something where you have to have somebody come in?
No, something probably, you know, with electrical to them and stuff. They're a honeywell actuator.
Um, okay.
None of us have any experience with them is the problem. And, um, so, uh, and cat, and as one of the things, um, Cascade, they do, service they do provide, they inspect fire dampers being HVAC contractor. But, um, I think we'd look at it closer, watch them do a couple. We might, you know, something we might take on.
I just wonder if it's one of those deals that the power's on, it keeps open. The power goes off, it shuts. Automatically. And then when the power comes on, it doesn't reset.
Well, is it what the power does, hold them in normally open position?
Right.
So then the power goes, and then once it's restored, it's supposed to open that damper back up. Or if, if the fire plant, you know, something, a sprinkler head goes off or something, trips the fire panel, they'll all close, like the doors all close and everything. Um, that's how they work. And, you know, they, they check and make sure the fire door is closed and everything else worked. I think it would be kind of part of the, our annual inspection.
Yeah, you would think. But you'd have to know that they're.
Yeah, we came across that. So, um, that's what we're working on. Um, let's see. I do have, I, uh, sent out, it's, uh, the professional service agreement to Sunbelt Controls. We'll start, um, um, putting some controls up in the mechanical room. We're gonna start on the heating side, uh, first phase of it and get that done. I'm gonna have to get with Jeremy, cause we're gonna have to get an IP address and stuff and things. I also need to see if I can get a laptop so that I can, you know, control things on Fridays when I'm off or home on the weekends or we get alarms. Um, so we're gonna start on that phase of heating side. And in the spring, we'll, uh, do the, um, cooling side, the cooling tower, cause the cooling towers totally does not function as, as properly like it should.
So would you rather have it on a laptop or on a phone?
I'd like to have my laptop, cause we'll be able to make adjustments and stuff, you know?
You haven't gotten your laptop yet?
Mm-hmm. No.
Did speak with them about that two weeks ago.
Okay.
I will follow up.
Okay. Um, cause we'll, um, be actually be able to turn things on and off, make adjustments, um, and stuff. So I'd like to be able to do that.
Well, and then the warning.
Yep.
That's probably more important than anything is you get a warning that something's not working.
Yeah, well, no, you know, if we have a flame out on a boiler, um, you know, if we need to swap it over to the other one. Um, we still have more work to do on the boilers once the season's over. Um, we have some valves we have to replace, but we can't take the system down right now to do them. So, um, we are running on the new boiler now. I was wanting to, being newer and more, hoping it's gonna be more economical and to see, I don't know, if we can track the gas usage on it. But, uh, that seems to be the main thing over on that building. Um, it uses the gas. So, um.
Well, it's gonna be hard to track it, cause the cost of everything is higher this year than last year.
Yeah, I just, we need to see if I could check on the usage, you know?
Yeah, the gallons.
If this newer boiler is, is more efficient and not, you know, burning as much gas as the old one did and stuff. Um, we're also gonna kind of, our water heater for the jail over there is also a boiler. Um, it's considered, it's, it has to be inspected. It's a pressure vessel. And, um, I'm gonna have to kind of look at it too, cause it's getting a lot of rollout when it's firing up and things and stuff. And, um.
And why that has to be a boiler? Why can't this be a standard water heater?
Um, I think cause of the volume of water they use. Um, cause what it has, it has a boiler there and it has a pump. And then it has, you know, seven hundred and fifty gallon, thousand gallon tank standing there. And so it recirc, it's heating and recirculating. It's not actually heating the water and, and sending it out right from that boiler. It recirc, you know, recirculates that storage tank. And then part of it goes out, cause we have two different temperatures. It's going out hotter to the, to the kitchen for their use. And then it goes through a tempering station, which sends it out to all of the showers, sinks and stuff. So is what it has. So it's, um, and it has a, it, it has a recirculating system on it too, recirculating the water going out to all the cells and stuff too.
And that's a propane?
Yeah, it's propane. Yep.
Where is that in the jail?
It's, it's up in the mechanic room. It sits right beside the, the old boiler up there is what it does on this east side of it. Yeah.
Okay. No, that was there.
And, um, and I think Pat told you, we have a new hire, uh, to replace Scott when he retires. So we have another Scott, replacing a Scott with a Scott. So.
That should be easy to remember.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah.
Start using initials.
Yeah, and stuff. So, um, but, um, other than that, it's kind of where we're at right now. You guys have any questions or anything?
When is Scott DeYoung's last day, end of the year?
December thirtieth.
December third?
December thirtieth.
Thirtieth, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Is what he put down, so it'd be his final day.
Good. And this new guy has started already?
He'll start December, uh, December first.
Okay, so we're gonna double in it that first month, Pat?
Yeah.
I think that's good. And then you feel like you've got everything out of Scott DeYoung as far as information and history?
Yeah, we're gonna use some, um, we're gonna go over some things, cause we don't have any really operating procedures for startups and start, you know, shutting downs of, uh, the cooling tower and boiler. So we're gonna sit down, I'm gonna sit down with him and, and, uh, go over the procedures. Um, actually, when the control guy was up here, and this guy is just super sharp, um, learned a lot about the function of how the boiler works, the old boiler and the louvers and everything else. And things from him as far as the control side of things. But, uh, just go over with him and, you know, the procedures he's used over the years and stuff and, uh, and get it documented. So we have like a book with our operating procedures of startups and shutdowns, um, of equipment and things we wanna do.
I think that's awesome. And then put it down so the next guy knows.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's awesome.
We can have it right up there. We're gonna have it on laminated sheets or anything else and have them, um, up there by the equipment and stuff. So.
Be great. And the other idea, Scott, is if he has extra time, um, Jeff Scott, his person, I can't remember her name off the top of my head, is a new hire that's using the software down there. And, I mean, Scott could get you all the serial numbers and, you know, a lot of the information if she would let you know what she needs to put all that stuff in the system.
He's gone through, he got me all the filter sizes, belt sizes, um, and things for all the heat pumps. So I need to get that to her so we can get it on a schedule and help us maintain our inventory, you know, make sure we have all the filters on hand that we need each time. So he has, uh, got that all put together. Um, went through and we, uh, took, I bought a label maker and we put labels on the ceiling grids for all the locations of all the heat pumps in the courthouse and stuff. So make them easier to find and things. So, um.
Perfect.
Um, everything's good with the baler. I see we had a nine thousand dollar repair there.
That thing, yeah. I, like I said, I told you that, um.
That thing?
Yeah.
With the greatest respect.
Yeah, it, uh, I, I, and actually I talked to Lakeshore, looking at maybe possibly somebody else to work on it. I think they kind of gouged us on that bill. Uh, their people weren't prepared, uh, why we had to pay for that. They just, they're about the only game in town right now that works on that stuff.
Was it more hydraulic issues or was it?
No, it was a timer and sensor. It was, um, it would only make like half or three quart of a bail and then quit. Um, so they were having to manually override it. And, um, that's when I met the gentleman up there. He told me, we got like a year and a half, two years. He said he can probably keep it running. And it's, uh, where the, the metal's getting so thin in the baling chamber
Right, right.
and stuff and things. We talked about our stuff. It's, um, you know, it's, it's got like seven thousand hours on it or something, is what the clock has on.
And that's a lot for
He said most.
A machine like that?
Yeah, most of those machines are, don't last that long or out of service at that point in their life.
Did we ever get a bid on one?
I did.
I don't remember when it came in. It was three hundred thousand?
Yeah. And then, cause we were looking at in the design of a new building and, and baler was the baler and it will auto tie and stuff. And, um, instead of, uh, top loading is a conveyor that is kind of recessed in the, in the concrete. And they push it onto that and it takes it up instead of this up and over all the time. They could just, um, actually said they put like a rubber tire off an excavator or some, or a big loader on the front of it. And they kind of sco, and scoop it onto that conveyor and then it, it, uh, loads the machine. And I think it was like three hundred thousand for that auto tie baler. And then another hundred thousand or something for the conveyor system.
I think it was around four hundred and twenty thousand, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Um, did you and Doug ever settle on Great West designing that facility? Where are we on that?
Um, right now, let's, I had discussion, Doug, we have continued contract work with them for their contract. Um, I think they were looking at more of the transfer site up there is what they're, we're looking at.
They were looking, that's right.
Um, you know, uh, what we need to do, the, I mean, the building needs a lot of work to it. Um, is the, both entrances into the transfer floor, the beams, the red iron is, um, they've, it's been backed into with the big loaders or something, cause private individuals haven't done that damage that's been done to them. You know, what we're gonna expand up there, traffic flow, how we're, you know, if we, the way we can. You know, what we're gonna expand up there, traffic flow, how we're, you know, if we, the way we can improve it so we don't have people that have already dumped coming back through it all to get weighed and stuff again. Um, I think that's the, the, the direction that they're looking at going.
And that's already been paid for or that's part of our initial?
It's part of our, what we've contracted with them.
And when do we expect to hear back from them?
He's, he's gonna start work again. The last thing I had of, um, was, uh, after, he said after the first of the year. We're working on, on that. That's kind of the final phase of what we, uh, contracted them to do.
So probably by spring, we should know something, at least a dollar figure.
Or something, yeah, or what, you know, direction to go with it and stuff or.
Was he gonna design the recycling building also? Was that part of that initial contract or is that something outside of that?
No, uh-uh.
No.
No, I kind of drew up something for it, um, you know, and it, you know, kind of worked with Scott Carnes at that point. So it's, um, I guess it's the point we need if we're, because like I said, that's kind of, the cover was kind of the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year, you know, work. Two thousand twenty-four, we wanted to look at trying to do a new baler and a building to house it in and so things flows better. Um, so I need to get with an, either an architect or something and kind of show what we, or what I have in mind.
Clearwater's working with an architect. That's what I was thinking, including include that. But when you were talking about the expense of a new builder or a new baler, I think we need to design the building first.
Yeah.
So we know how it all comes together if that.
Well, I know we talked to you about keeping the old baler and the old building for the aluminum and plastic and using the new baler.
Yeah.
Just for cardboard, so that we don't.
Yeah.
Put all rigs in one basket, but I don't know if that's.
That thing's wore out. I mean, and what, the kind of, what I incorporated the old building into the new as a place to house, you know, especially our cardboard, because once it gets wet, their market value goes away in, in that. The new baler will again do it all, you know, plastic, paper, cans. Um, add it where we could back in and dump, dump a truck without having to, they have to raise it and go forward so far and back because they can't go all the way out.
Right, right.
Tear the door off.
Tear the door.
Yep. And, um, and then possibly leave some bays that it can store overflow in. When they don't have enough cans or plastic or cardboard to make a bail, they can set it aside, you know, and not have to try to clear it, clear off the floor again. So, um.
So do you want to work on that architect for that?
Yeah, we can. And, um, uh, and then I did talk to the gentleman, the people up there that are putting up that new sports center that do steel erection, got their name. So I just need to actually get, um, have to get it put out for bid and, um, get back with R and M and private, you know, and purchase the engineered drawings from them and stuff. So we have something to give the people that are gonna do the building, what they're bidding on. They don't do the concrete work, but they, they do have people that do do the concrete work, so.
Well, I think, sounds like you're moving on it.
Yeah.
And I know in R and M, they want pretty good plans. They didn't want something just sketched on a yellow pad. And this is kind of what we're thinking about. They need to know all kinds of stuff, so we, we gotta do it right.
Yeah. And when I, I, when I did, you know, get the first bid from them, they offered some engineered plans that, uh, that, uh, is what they did. Uh, I'd have to get a clarification if that was on the steel or if that was on what was required to hold it down. Because basically with a building like that, you're more important holding it down and supporting it. Um, so, um.
Right.
Have to get.
Yeah, the wind's hard on the building like that.
Yeah.
They have hay barns leaning because of the wind.
Yeah.
Um, maybe you could contact them to see what plans they have.
Commissioners, I don't know if you remember, but CH two M Hill did our, did some recycling center plans for us back in twenty twenty.
And that was for the CUP, right? And I think they had something that had been designed. I can't remember if it was approved through the CUP or if they required.
Do you still have that, Doug?
I'm looking for it right now. And so I find it all worded.
One thing, you know, we scanned all those plans in, you know, for Clearwater and stuff. Is there a place where I can access those?
Laserfish. If you have access to Laserfish, yeah, they're all in there.
I don't know how to access Laserfish, but I'll find out.
You have to hit a rod, a little tiny nightgown.
Is it?
Put, put a ticket in and we'll make sure you have access to Laserfish.
Because I, you know, um, people ask about, you know, do we have plans or want to look at something to be, uh, you know, if I can email them the copy of the plan or the specific one they're looking for, it'd be helpful.
That's a great idea.
So, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? We're all done with Alpha Nursy, all that's bought and paid for?
It's done. Um, we're gonna have to look at it in the spring. Um, those things look up out in front, out here, uh, where the center section they redid. I don't think they put enough fill back in before they laid the sod.
It's leaning already?
Well, we have, it's hard to tell right now. They had someone come but look at it and they said, well, you know, it's got some settling, but it was more than settling. And then, um, um, so, yeah, we're, we're basically done with that with it right now.
See what it looks like in the spring, huh?
Yeah.
Don't let our warranty lapse.
Yeah. Yeah, and stuff, so it should be good.
You didn't think of anything else? Any more questions for Scott? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So Jeff is not able to come in today. He bobs snow most of the night and he's sent me a text. He's not gonna be available. So we could go right into our next agenda item, which is an executive session. So, or do you want to do the commissioner discussion?
I would advise to go into the executive session, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to go in the executive, Rado Go two oh six one C.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Move this seconded by roll call, please.
Alpha and I.
Alpha and I.
Ezra Brooke, I, Doug will be in right at eleven.